Good evening, and I want to thank everyone for coming and welcome all of you to the 2013 Public Safety and Judiciary Briefing on Vehicle for Hire Changes. My legislative assistant Devon Peros, who's sitting behind me, will be accepting speaker slips until 5:30 PM this evening. You can find the speaker slips by the entrance of chambers, and we look forward to hearing from any of you who are here tonight that would like to offer comments or ask questions. I want to thank the following individuals for being here this evening. Director of Public Safety Mitchell J. Brown, Assistant Director Amanda Ford, Support Services Administrator Ramona Patz, Assistant City Attorney Wesley Phillips, and Assistant Auditor Molly Petiti. And also, I want to recognize our wonderful Vehicle for Hire Board who has also joined us, and also acknowledge all of the other staff members that are here. I thought I saw, there's Carl, and hi Councilmember. Want to acknowledge Councilmember Tyson who's joined us, and I believe we have John Oswat from Councilmember Klein's office also joining us. Just to start off with a little bit of background regarding tonight's hearing, we have certainly been very, very appreciative to all of the energy and the input from all of the stakeholders who have provided their voices and comments as we shape what you'll hear from us tonight. It is always important when we have input and the energy from the stakeholders and the individuals of which our proposed changes can impact, and I'm certainly grateful for all the folks from the Columbus Vehicle for Hire industry. Modernizing and updating our Vehicle for Hire code has certainly been a priority for mine and quite some time as well as the mayor. Last April, the mayor and I met to discuss the changes. We met with the Department of Public Safety and discussed the current state of the industry and the necessary improvements we hope to see going forward. After meeting, Public Safety in my office began the hard work of making policy decisions, proposed policy decisions. And throughout that conversation through the course of 2012, many of these decisions were presented to the Vehicle for Hire Board. Through their careful alteration, voting, and deliberation on many topics and changes, we then moved forward with a comprehensive approach to make changes to the industry. This meant updating both rules and regulations and the Columbus City Code. Change to rules and regulations passed by the Vehicle for Hire Board addressed industry standards. The code changes that were also discussed with the Vehicle for Hire Board throughout the course of this year, and also at a special meeting of the Board earlier this month. My office, the Public Safety Department, and the City Attorney's Office have met with committee representing independent taxicab owners this month to discuss the proposed changes that you'll hear further discussed this evening. From these meetings and many others, compromises were reached and further changes were made to this proposed code. Even after this evening and going forward with presenting these changes for passage of this proposed code, we will continue to work on a variety of issues. Upon the suggestion of the taxicab owners, we've also decided to add several provisions that we certainly consider a benefit to the industry. The proposed code changes that are presented here will help the industry become yet another highlight for Columbus. And as many know, we are always looking for things to highlight that increases our visitor tourism and hospitality industry that contributes to such great gains in revenue for the city. In 2012, our city celebrated its bicentennial with style, and across the nation, many great stories came about our great city, and we hope to continue to add to that. Our tourism and hospitality industries are certainly seeing a growth from that work, and certainly an example of that would be the recently awarded NAGAA Softball World Series to be held here in 2015. And it is certainly time that we help our Vehicle for Hire industry make changes to keep up with the growth in this area, and certainly the changes that will benefit the industry as well as their customers. I want to make sure that everyone understands consumer protection is a very important element to public safety, and it is certainly an element that we consider with the changes that are being proposed. As the Public Safety Chair, I want to make sure that passengers are safe, that when they entrust their lives and their mode of transportation to our taxicab drivers, that there are some protections in place. We are adopting best practices seen across the United States that will modernize our fleet, protect our passengers, and certainly promote the industry. Taxicab drivers are often our city's first ambassadors to visitors. An individual's impression from the airport can set the tone for how they view our great city. We want to ensure that our visitors remember our city for all of the right reasons, what we all come to enjoy and love about the great city of Columbus, and that certainly starts with these code changes. Now, I would like to start by turning over the hearing to Director Brown, Assistant Director Ford, Ramona Patz, Support Services Administrator, to provide a presentation of the proposed policy changes for the Vehicle for Hire code. Just before that, if you'll allow me, opportunity to recognize Councilmember Craig who has also joined us. Are you ready?
Good evening, Council Safety Chair Mills and Councilmember Tyson and Councilmember Craig. We're pleased to be here this evening to discuss the proposed changes to the Vehicle for Hire Board and the Vehicle for Hire industry. With me this evening, as you've already announced, is Amanda Ford, my Assistant, Director of Public Safety, Ramona Patz, Administrator of Support Services, and Wes Phillips from the City Attorney's Office, and several members of the Vehicle for Hire Board. The Vehicle for Hire industry provides a vital source of transportation, not only to visitors, but to those who live in and around the city of Columbus. They serve as ambassadors, as you've already stated, and are often the first experience that people have when they enter our city. This industry takes pride in knowing trendy entertainment options, upcoming sporting events, great restaurants, and other local attractions in our great city. While this information is important to the success of the industry, it is imperative that we in Public Safety make certain that we only license safe and reliable vehicles that are clean, visually appealing, that drivers have gone through a thorough criminal background and driver records check, and that passengers can clearly identify a driver. And these are just a few of some of the issues that we're going to discuss this evening. I will now turn it over to Amanda Ford, who will take us through a PowerPoint presentation on the proposed changes for this evening.
Thank you, Chair Mills, members of council. Thanks for giving us this opportunity tonight to talk about these proposed changes. You know, the Vehicle for Hire Board and, you know, council, our office, Support Services have worked really hard over the last few months to really get these changes going. So as you're aware, the mayor came to us a few years ago, actually, and said he would like to see changes to the industry. He wanted cleaner cabs, newer cabs, he wanted all of them to accept credit cards, just a few of the changes that we're talking about. But, you know, obviously, it takes some time. So we started, we met again in April of 2012, as you said earlier, and started discussing some of the proposed changes. So the Vehicle for Hire Board has had great success over the last six months, making some of the changes in rules and regulations. So they've limited the age of a cab, they've limited the miles of a cab that can come into service, they've improved the dress code. So those are a few of the changes that they've made on their own, so now it's time to update those codes that go along with it. So basically, for tonight, you know, we, our reasons for our proposed changes, sorry. Obviously, as we went through the code, it hasn't been reviewed entirely for several years. So that's the first thing we do, was started reading every code, trying to figure out what needed change, updating to some of the old terminology that's in there, making the code easier to understand and reducing some of the repetitions. Obviously, the way the codes were written years ago, every code kind of says the same thing, other than a few rules that apply to each industry. So we tried to take some of that repetitiveness out of it and make it a little easier to understand. But most importantly, the reasons, we want to improve the industry standards. You know, we know that a lot of other cities have really great, a really great cab industry, and we want that same thing here. I think our drivers want it as well. They've all expressed that, you know, they're supportive of a lot of these changes. But most importantly, to make cabs safer and visually more appealing to customers and visitors. We've done our due diligence, you know, over the past six months, the Vehicle for Hire Board, we've met with them monthly, we've talked about these changes, and we did a formal presentation for them in January so that they were fully aware of all the proposed changes that we were bringing to council. We also met with some of the independent drivers as well the following week, going through those changes, answering their questions, listening to their concerns. Basically, all the codes that apply to Vehicle for Hire, 585 is the actual Vehicle for Hire Board, 587 is the Vehicle for Hire Owner License, 589 was called Taxi Cab Driver's License, but obviously, we're updating that to Read Vehicle for Hire Driver's License. 591 specifically addresses taxicabs. 592 Petty Cabs, that's a new code that we're currently drafting. Obviously, we know that petty cabs are, you know, fairly large, especially in the short northeastern area. So we're working on drafting some code for them as well, and we'll be meeting with that industry. Delivery vehicles, and then horse carriages. So within all of that, petty cabs is the only new codes that we're adding. The changes to 585, the Vehicle for Hire Board, basically, the Board will no longer have the authority to revoke or suspend licenses. That authority is being given to the Director of Public Safety. And how this came about, you know, for some time, just sitting at the Vehicle for Hire Board meetings, we're noticing that there's not a whole lot of conversation. When we have a driver who comes in, they have a hearing, they talk about the issue that happened, that went on, that kind of got them there in the first place, the Vehicle for Hire Board just wasn't real responsive. So the license section would typically make a recommendation, and they would just accept the recommendation that licensing made. So we wanted more conversation based around that, and just trying to steer, that was difficult. So we approached them a few months ago and asked how they felt about moving that authority over to the Director. So basically, at this point, if a driver gets in any trouble, he'll have a hearing in front of the Director. He has the opportunity to appeal that with the Board of License Appeals, which they've had that same process all along. So nothing's really changing about their process, they just won't go in front of the Vehicle for Hire Board. They'll go directly in front of the Director, and he'll make a recommendation. But the Board remains, maintains all their authority to vote on rules and regulations and to vote on the issuance of new licenses. So the only thing we're changing in that code, other than updating some of the terminology, is that who, that the Director has the authority to suspend or revoke licenses. In 587, the Vehicle for Hire Owner License, we are making some fees, fee adjustments. The taxicab and livery fee will increase from $150 to $225. Originally, we proposed $300, and, you know, we heard the industry speak out, they felt like the increase was too high, so we made some compromises on that, but the fee had not been increased since 2003. So obviously, we need to do a better job in safety of making sure that we're, you know, adjusting those fees as necessary instead of waiting 10 years to make any of those changes. For the horse carriage license, there will be no fee increase. Vehicle-to-vehicle transfers will go from $100 to $150, and once again, that has not been increased since 2003. And then rein inspections. In the past, we've not had a reinspection fee, so when they come in to get their license, that initial inspection of their cab is for free, or their vehicle is free. If they fail that inspection and have to return for another inspection, they'll be charged a $50 fee. You know, our goal with that is that they come prepared to their inspection, and so that we don't have to pull staff out of their jobs again to come back out and inspect the vehicle. So our goal is that, to really make sure that they're passing that inspection on the first time. The issue of insurance requirements, currently, our taxicabs are only required to have $100,000 in coverage, and obviously, we feel like this is too low, so we want to increase that to $300,000. Originally, what we had proposed was to do kind of a phased-in approach, to initially go to $300,000, increase to $400,000 in 2014, and $500,000 in 2015. You know, when we met with the industry, obviously, they had some concerns about that. We realized the financial impact that that's going to have on them, so we compromised and settled with $300,000 for right now. But the issue of insurance is something we're going to continue to evaluate and look at as time goes on. The livery vehicles, there will be no change. Currently, they're insured for $500,000, and horse carriages will remain at $300,000. Continuation of the owner's license, the annual statement of claims and judgments, typically, that's been submitted every December. We felt like it should be more in line with when they actually come in and apply for their license, so that's just something they'll have to submit with their license. And the issue of owner-to-owner transfers, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about this. We realize what a big issue this is for the industry, so we've made a commitment in Public Safety that we're going to continue to do more research on this issue. We're not going to make any changes right now, but that we will, we are committed to addressing this issue by the end of the year. Ramona and I are going to take a few road trips and go to a couple different other cities to determine how they issue their licenses, and we'll get some additional input. But before we come back to council for any recommendations, we'll meet with the Vehicle for Hire Board, talk about the changes, and also meet with the independents. They've, they've got a great subcommittee put together, and they've been wonderful to work with so far. So we'll come back to them, ask for their input, and make sure that we can come up with a plan that's both beneficial to the industry itself and the city. Code 589, the Vehicle for Hire Driver's License, initially, it was titled Taxi Cab Driver's License, we're just updating that terminology. Their annual fee increase will go from $25 to $50. You know, once again, the fee hasn't been increased since 2003. The driver background check requirements, initially, this was only two years. In our initial proposal, we had increased it to five years, and then we realized that it was not in line with our commercial sales code of seven years. So we're going to make that, propose that we stick with that seven-year timeline. But this will not affect any of our current drivers who have a license, they'll all be grandfathered in. This will only affect them if they have new charges. So any new applicant will, will look back seven years on their criminal background, but all current drivers, it'll, you know, it won't, nothing will change for them. They'll still maintain their license. Finally, the driver ID must be posted in the rear compartment of the car for clear driver identification. You know, often, when you get into a cab, it's posted by the taxi meter. So in the off chance that that passenger is having a poor experience in the cab, it may be uncomfortable for them to ask for the driver's name or trying to look over his shoulder to get a name. So we want to make sure that it's posted in the rear of the vehicle, it'll have a picture of the driver, their name, and a phone number where they can call if they've had a bad experience, they can call the licensing department and file a complaint. Continuing the driver's license, we'll no longer offer a professional driver's license. Basically, this is something that, you know, if you've had a clean driving record and you've been driving for so long, you're issued a professional driver's license, which only is renewed every three years. You know, the reality is they're not being, not taking any additional driver training, so it's not really what we would consider a professional license. And also, the issue is the background checks. So they're going three years without a background check, and, you know, the potential of having an OVI or something that we would not be aware of. So it's more of a, a safety issue on our end. But what we're going to do is, all current drivers' licenses that are issued, they will maintain that until it expires, so they won't be required to come in and renew until it actually expires. But we're also going to work with the Vehicle for Hire Board and give them an opportunity to create a professional driver's license, if that's something they would choose to do, but one that would include more driver training and different aspects like that, so it would be more of that professional driver's license. Drivers are not allowed to wear earphones, earbuds, or headsets while they're driving. Obviously, you know, we may potentially look at also, you know, including texting. I know we have a texting ban, so we want to make sure that that's clearly stated. So we may end up changing the wording of that a little bit to make sure that texting is included in that. And then finally, accepting physicals from a licensed nurse practitioner, not just a licensed physician. We realize how hard it is sometimes to always get into your physician on a yearly basis to get that physical, so we want to make it a little bit easier for them. Onto 591 for taxicabs. Initially, it was titled Taxi Cab Regulations. The reality is, the code doesn't set the regulations, they have their own rules and regulations, so, once again, just kind of updating some of that terminology. We're going to increase the drop rate from $2.75 to $3. We have not had a fare increase since 2006. You know, our drivers are working very hard out there. We realize that we're adding some additional expenses with some of these changes, so we want to help kind of offset some of that expense. Obviously, $3 is just the max they can charge, they don't have to increase that drop rate. But, you know, every passenger should know, when they get in the car, they can see that up to $3 on the actual, actual taxi meter when they get in. Increasing the credit card fee that a driver can charge a passenger from $0.50 to $1.50. We realize that, you know, depending on what you've negotiated with your credit card company, they may be paying $3, $3 to $4 for every charge that, you know, they accept through a credit card. So we just want to help them recoup some of that cost that they, that expense that they're taking on. And then finally, requiring all taxicabs to have a credit card machine in the rear compartment of the vehicle. We want to give them plenty of time to accomplish this. We realize this is an added cost, but it's such a benefit to the passengers. So we're just, we're going to give them till June of 2014 to make sure that they actually have a credit card swipe machine in the rear of the vehicle. We feel it's a safety issue for both the passenger and the driver. You know, you go to the grocery store now, you never give your credit card to the cashier, you always swipe it yourself. So we want to give that same opportunity to our passengers who ride in the cab, so that they have that opportunity, A, not only to use a credit card, but that they're able to swipe it themselves on a secure piece of equipment. I know that several drivers use the square that's attached to their personal cellphone, and I know that's been so great for them, and it's easy, but the reality is, we all know that things can still get hacked into, you know. So the idea of giving somebody your credit card to swipe through their personal phone, you know, would raise some concern to most of us. The remaining changes to the Vehicle for Hire, there were no real changes made. In 592, the Petty Cab, obviously, we're still finalizing that draft for them, and I actually have arranged, or in the process of setting up meetings with some stakeholders, some petty cab owners, to sit down with them and make sure that our regulations are on track with a lot of what other cities are doing, that, to make sure that they understand and give them an opportunity to answer any questions. So we'll come back to you, hopefully, in the next month, and have a hearing on the Petty Cab regulations. Delivery vehicles, all we did, the livery and the horse carriage, actually, the only thing, changes we made were just updating some terminology, but also taking out some of that repetitive stuff that was already in the Vehicle for Hire Owner and License section, or Driver section. You know, with all the changes, we realized the financial impact that it's going to have on this industry, so we kind of took just a cost profile. So we've got taxicab owners, you know, we have, currently have 157 corporate or company owners and 343 independent driver, or independent owners. Right now, their current licensing fees per year is $223, and that includes the fee to actually have their taxi meter inspected, and that'll go to $298. So we're looking at, you know, about a $75 increase in their annual fees per year. And currently, their insurance costs, you know, it just ranges depending on how they're insured, but anywhere from $140 to $225 per month. And we know that this increase in insurance, you know, will definitely increase that monthly fee for them, but anywhere from $2.25 and up, depending on where they're getting their insurance. The drivers, we currently have just barely over 1,000 drivers, their costs will go up about $50 a year. The livery owners, we have 79 corporate owners, their costs, once again, will go up $75 just in licensing fees. And then the livery driver, we have 131 licensed livery drivers, and their costs will go up about $50 per year for licensing as well. And, you know, one thing that you had asked us about early on, and it's not in here, is what that fare rate increase would look like to the passenger. You know, so we took an average 10-mile trip, you know, whether they were using a credit card, not using a credit card, and it averaged out to about a $1.20 to $1.50 increase per ride, you know, on an average 10-mile ride. So we didn't feel like that was unreasonable to ask the passenger, you know, it wasn't a significant increase on their end as well. Obviously, you know, these are just the proposed changes we have right now. As we continue to work on these codes, some other changes that are up for discussion is the $50 charge for regurgitation fees, or however you want to say it. But we've realized a lot of other cities do this, and we know how inconvenient it is if somebody gets sick in the back of a cab. It inconveniences the driver, you know, it's going to take them out of service for at least two hours while they get it cleaned up, they got to deodorize it. So they're losing money while they're cleaning up this mess in their cab. So obviously, we want to give them that opportunity, but obviously, we'd also require it to be posted in the rear of the cab, so that when you get in, you can clearly see. But like, I think that's something we can put in rules and regulations, so the Vehicle for Hire Board can work on putting that into rules and regs. Also, the ability to limit the age of a passenger without adult supervision. We know that this can be an issue, and we want to at least explore it. I know it may be uncomfortable for some drivers, you know, if mom's got to go to work and the child needs to get to grandma's house, you know, sticking an eight-year-old in a cab by themselves may be uncomfortable for the driver. So they should have that ability to be able to refuse that fare if they're not comfortable in that situation. So it's something we'll continue to evaluate and try to figure out what that right age is for doing that limitation. And then finally, requiring all single passengers to ride in the backseat of a vehicle. You know, this will limit any possibility for any misconduct on the passenger or the driver. You know, it's really a safety issue on both sides. So then that's something that we'll probably look to put in the code, but we want to have some more discussions stemmed around that as well. And finally, just one last thing, while this is not part of the code, the wheelchair specialty license is something that we do ask council for, we make that request. So we'll be asking to increase our moratorium from 500 to 530, but those 30 new licenses will strictly be for wheelchair and specialty vehicles. So we have the breakdown of how the licenses will be distributed. Yellow cab will get 10, ACME will have access to 5, independent owners 10, and 5 will be open for others. Basically, the Vehicle for Hire Board came up with a lottery process to distribute these licenses and voted on how we would distribute those 15. And the rules and regulations have been drafted and are expected to be on the next Vehicle for Hire Board meeting, so we'll get that process going for them. And so, basically, that wraps up all the proposed changes we have at this time. You know, we'll continue to listen to concerns and answer questions from the industry as we move forward with this. So we'll now open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, I appreciate it, and as you know, it's, it's been a long road to get here and still much discussion to be had, particularly in the areas where we've highlighted for continued discussion, age of, of passenger and all of that. I know that we started those discussions and they just became challenged, and we want to be very intentional and deliberate about that and engaging of the industry as we move forward on those changes, which require a lot more discussion. I wanted to ask a couple questions to help in terms of clarity to the audience, the listening and the viewing audience, because I know that sometimes it's industry jargon that may not necessarily be clear to everyone. But can you mention in terms of the composition of the Vehicle for Hire Board? Because I want to make sure everyone understands that when we talk about going to the Board, going to the Board does include members from the industry. So can you talk a little bit about that, so it doesn't look like we're going to a, a Board who has no clue about the industry, not engaged? There are industry representatives on the Board, so when we have these discussions and say it was voted on by the Board, that there is input from the industry?
Yep, absolutely. The Board is made up of members from the industry, there's some independent drivers, there are a few corporate drivers that have larger fleets. We have some livery representation on that Board as well, and we also have city representation from the Auditor's Office. You know, obviously, Public Safety Chairs, the Vehicle for Hire Board, obviously, your council aide is on there. So we have representation from both the city and then the industry itself, but then we also have representation from the airport, since they deal a lot with taxicabs and also experience Columbus. And we also have, I believe, two citizen members as well represented on there from the community.
Thank you, and I just wanted to, if you could elaborate, and just for additional clarity, again, to share with everyone present that the authority being given to the Director of Public Safety also helps us to minimize conflict that may arise should there be competitors making decisions related to those who are facing the Board, and so we can minimize a conflict there. Can you elaborate?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, sitting through a few of those hearings myself, you could tell that there was that sense of uncomfortableness, you know, that you're, you're determining what your competition's potential punishment can be, you know. So it puts everybody in an awkward situation trying to make those decisions, decisions to be fair to everybody. You know, I felt like they were always fair and reasonable, but it's getting that conversation stemmed. So I think it will help in the long run. And actually, the turnaround time for the initial hearing should be quicker, because we're not waiting on the next Vehicle for Hire Board meeting, that we can get that hearing set up with the Director and get them moving through their process.
Thank you, and again, because I know that you and I and my office team have been living and sleeping and breathing Vehicle for Hire Board for the past year or so. Just for clarity's sake, when we talk about livery, that does impact what we regard as limousine drivers?
Yeah, yes, that does include our limousine drivers, yeah.
And I think another note to point out, the insurance increase has not been raised since 1988. I have that correct? Okay, just want to make sure that, you know, there has been changes from everything, from milk to gas to everything else. And with this, we need to consider the cost of an average accident, and insurance protections are there for passengers. And again, I think the reasonableness of not having any insurance requirement increases since 1988 makes that a little bit more reasonable to understand. And again, also for clarity's sake, when we talked about the gathering of information from other cities, it is about how we manage owner-to-owner transfers and not from how licenses are obtained.
Absolutely, yeah, that's what we want to look at, that issue of owner-to-owner. I know that there's been a lot of talk amongst the Board and, you know, city staff as well, just about that issue of owner-to-owner. So we want to make sure we come up with something that is obviously a compromise, but that's both beneficial to the industry and the city as well. And I, I don't think we'll have a problem doing that, I think we just definitely need to make sure we get our research done. I think we just definitely need to make sure we get our research done. And like I said, we'll go back to the industry, have lots of conversation about it, and listen to any concerns that they have. So I think we can come up with something, and, you know, we've dedicated ourselves that we will get this done by the end of the year.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, but I did want to take a break to remind folks that there is one minute left to submit a speaker slip. And again, my staff, Devin Perros and Annie Marsico, who are behind me, are there to accept speaker slips should anyone want to speak on behalf of the Vehicle for Hire proposed changes. I also want to acknowledge that we have representation from Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Klein's office, and I know that many of the folks that are interested have contacted some of those offices. So I want you to know that they're present and listening to the changes and the presentation as well. Again, going back to the questions, just so that there's additional emphasis on, some of these must be in place for consumer protection and protecting passengers and the identification in the backseat. We know with technology iPhones, then people can take pictures. It creates that friction should there be any kind of disagreement or issues with the passenger and the driver, and that's for both of their sake, the driver as well as the passenger. And I have one or two final questions. I think I've been making sure that we provide clarity, because again, we live, have been living this for a year or so, but it may be just a jargon issue, just so that everybody understands. Can you elaborate and provide a basic definition of what is a drop rate?
Trust me, it took me a while to understand it all, too. And I'm still learning, I think, some days. No, that drop rate is that initial first, what, like 2/9 mile, I think it is, but it's that initial rate that shows up on the taxi meter when you get in. So it can't, it won't be able to say more than $3. Right now, it says $2.75 unless they choose to charge you a lower rate. That's their option. They just can't charge more than $3 for that initial, it's $3 to get in the cab, basically. And then from that point on, you're charged, I believe it's $0.45 every 2/9 mile.
And moving into what we consider part of the modernizing changes that we're proposing, the credit card acceptance. Any additional information you can share about where we are in comparison to other cities who have moved this way in terms of credit card acceptance already?
You know what? Fortunately, a lot of our owners have already taken those steps to put the credit cards or they at least offer it. Some already have the credit card swipes in the rear of their vehicles. Others are at least offering that service by using the square on their cell phone. So fortunately, you know, if you want a cab in the city of Columbus that accepts credit cards, it's not that difficult. You just need to make sure you request it ahead of time. So I think making every cab provide that service will be so beneficial. I mean, the reality is, we all know that people just don't carry cash anymore. You know, everybody uses a credit card, and that's just the way we're going with everything. So it only makes sense for them to follow that trend and be as customer-friendly as we can be.
Thank you. And I wanted, if you can, I don't know if we can go back to the Vehicle for Hire cost profile. This is information that I think is extremely important, so that not only my fellow caucus members can understand, but who these changes will directly impact and what does the industry look like? Because it's one thing to say, we need to make changes, but who do they impact and how much of an impact are we having? And so I think this is a very important slide, and I encourage everyone to look at. And if there is additional ways of looking at the profile for our Vehicle for Hire industry in our great city, please let me know, but I think this is important to know. And if you could talk a little bit about our license limit, or just a little bit about the history with our license limit, I appreciate that.
Well, currently, we have a moratorium of 500 licenses in the city, and it's been that way for, oh, gosh, since 2000. We've only allowed for 500 taxicab owners' license in the city. Obviously, it meets the need in the city of Columbus for, you know, just transportation needs in general, but it also doesn't provide, like saturating our market. You know, obviously, I don't think the city of Columbus could, you know, provide 1,000 taxicabs and actually, you know, allow them to be successful in their careers. So the reality is, sticking with that 500 number has worked for us. People have still been able to get a cab. It hasn't been an issue of not having reliable transportation out there. So we'll continue to stick with that 500, with the exception of adding 30 this year for the wheelchair accessible cabs.
Thank you. And I want to reiterate that we'll continue our discussion related to changes that impact the industry, but we will not do that without engaging the industry in those additional discussions and conversation. So I want to also speak to the passengers who are listening or viewing this hearing this evening, that some of the changes that we'll need to look at that impact the industry, as you talked about, any damages to a cab, I want our passengers to understand that it is our taxicab owner's livelihood that is impacted when something happens to their vehicle that keeps them from picking up a fare, and that impacts their livelihood. It's not just, oops, I've had an accident, those, it's someone's livelihood. So I hope that our passengers consider that as well. And Amanda, if you could share a little bit about, if someone is interested about the lottery process related to the wheelchair specialty license, what steps they should take to find out more information related to it?
You know, my first step would have them call our license section, it's 645-8366, and they can get the exact process of how that's going to work. It's also posted in our rules and regulations, or will be posted in our rules and regulations. You know, obviously, this is something that is not up and running yet, but hopefully will be in the next few months, because we realize we have some owners who are ready to go now. So we're trying to speed this process along. So once we get the licenses approved by council and get the regulations in place, we'll move forward with this. But the first step would have them call the license section and speak to them about exactly how that process is going to work and how they can get into the lottery.
Thank you. And I'll offer the opportunity for comments or questions from fellow council members. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Mills. And first of all, I want to say thank you to you and your team for working on this for the last year, and certainly want to say thank you to the Department of Safety and to the Attorney's Office for the work that they've done in working with your team to ensure that we would make these, these changes will be proposed to us, and certainly the Vehicle for Hire Board, and reaching out and working with them, as well as having the numerous meetings with the individuals that these changes would affect. So I'd still have a couple other comments. And certainly, as you've said earlier, this is really about safety and also economic development, because this is for each of these cab drivers and cab owners to be able to continue to have the fares and to make sure that their vehicles are safe, not only for the passengers but for themselves, is why a lot of these changes are being made. And so I appreciate that. Have a couple, well, one question was around, and you've answered some of it, but just around the increase in the insurance, and certainly realizing that, so if you could just kind of share a little bit about why the increase. I know that we haven't had an increase in 1980, since 1988, and, but the importance of raising that amount.
You know, I think we can all say we've been very fortunate in this industry, that we have not had anything, you know, major happen. But, you know, even with discussions with them, we feel like it's somewhat underinsured. You know, $100,000 doesn't go far. We all know that in today. So, you know, part of that reason is, A, it hasn't not been increased in so long, but B, we just want to make sure that they have enough insurance to cover any major accident that they would have. You know, and like I said, it's something that we'll continue to look into and have discussions with the Vehicle for Hire Board on, but most importantly, we want to make sure that the consumer is protected, but they are also protected as a driver.
Thank you. I think that's an important comment, because it's not just about the consumer, it's also about the driver. So I appreciate that we are looking to increase it. I know initially, people will think, well, that's too much money, but in today's environment, certainly, if you ever were to get into an accident and anyone were to be harmed, that we want to make sure that people are properly covered. So I appreciate that. And then the last page of the slides is looking at with the fare rate comparison. Certainly, looking at Columbus's, the increases that we're going to have in Columbus and how long it's been since you've had those increases, and then looking at the average rate of Cleveland, Cincinnati, and Indianapolis, that we certainly are in alignment with those changes in order to provide the type of service that we want to have in our community. So I thank you for your work, and I thank you, Chairwoman, for the fine work your committee has done. Thank you.
Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Mills, for your leadership. Really, I just have an observation as opposed to a question. I certainly, again, want to thank Safety Director Brown and staff for all of your work. This is certainly a critical, very important mode of transportation in our city, and I think your thoughtfulness, I think the Vehicle for Hire, all of the work that, and the discussion that is being taken place, is invaluable to us getting to the place in our city where we make, as we seek to make these important changes. I think I was particularly interested, as we begin to talk about the young people and how we transport them, and at least having the conversation about the implications for that. But all of the work that you're doing, I know that this provides livable, very important income stream for those that are driving, that own the cabs to our city. So it does have significant impact to our city. But I think that the time, the timing of this, I think the thoughtfulness, we need to be very clear about where we're going. And I appreciate so much the work that has transpired over this time. I'm looking forward to hearing from the speakers tonight relative to where we are right now. But again, I certainly acknowledge your work and your leadership, and I appreciate all that have come down tonight to talk to us about this very, very important issue. Again, the economic impact. Again, we've talked about the implication of the insurance, what that means, and to our citizens, and certainly the efficient and effective, the quality of life issues regarding this matter. So again, thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. And we are at one of the most important portions of a hearing, and that is public testimony. And I will ask that you all who have turned in speaker slips begin to prepare yourself to approach the podium. Thank you for taking the time for attending and for sharing your comments. And I want to remind everyone that you have three minutes to share your comments relative to the Vehicle for Hire on the purpose of tonight's hearing. And I certainly want to make sure that your three minutes addresses the subject of tonight's hearing and provides us with some impact information as we move forward that will have an impact on these proposed changes. I believe our first speaker is Mike Brown. Mr. Brown, if you would approach the podium, please. State your name and address and any organization that you may represent, and please adhere to the three minutes as we have a list of speakers to hear from this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Mills, Councilmember Tyson, Councilmember Craig, Director Brown, Amanda, and the whole team with the commission. This has been a good process. I feel very honored to have been a part of it, representing Experience Columbus, the convention and visitors bureau here in our city. And you guys have met me before a few times, and you know that one of the things I love best about my job is that I get to go out and do a lot of the best things that are going on, whether it's the arts and culture, the food, the hotels. And to be honest, a lot of cab drivers know my address at this point, 1142 Pennsylvania Avenue in Harrison West. I'm not only on the commission, but I'm also a customer. And as I look at it from a customer's point of view, and as part of the team of ambassadors that welcomes so many millions of visitors every year, we understand how very important it is to have a quality frontline fleet out there every day, moving people around. They're not going to spend money if they can't get from one place to another. And so this is a critical part of our transportation infrastructure, and overall, we know they do a fairly good job, but we can do better. And the team behind me with Amanda Ford, working with some of the drivers in the room today and the companies, working with members of your staffs and the administration, they put forward, I think, a very balanced proposal, and there's been a lot of debate on it. And so from the point of view of a customer and Experience Columbus, we are very much in favor of these changes, because we do think it will steadily improve the quality of the experience of everyone who rides. It also does offer some new protections for drivers, slight increase in some of the revenues that they can charge, which I know is very important, but it offers those protections that at the end of the day, everybody is covered better. One that I feel very strongly about personally is the age of the cabs has been greatly debated, the insurance rates, but we know we have some cabs on the road that just aren't up to par anymore. Let's get them out of the system, let's make everybody work a little bit harder, and we can really shine for everybody who uses the system. So on behalf of my organization and my role on the commission, we want to thank you for your leadership on this, encourage passage, and obviously, offer to be a part of this as it goes forward in any way that you require. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I appreciate you coming in this evening. Thank you. And I will apologize far in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. I sincerely apologize. It's not certainly my strong suit, so I will apologize ahead. Solomon Gabriel. If you would please approach the podium, please state your name properly, as I'm sure I may not have. And you have three minutes to speak to us on the topic of Vehicle for Hire this evening, and welcome to council.
Thank you. You did a wonderful job. You pronounced the exact way I do. Members of the Columbus City Councils, all of you, especially you and your crews, we heard a lot of good things about you, and we seen practically tonight. And also the city license section, who worked with us without getting tired day and night, members of VHP, Vehicle for Hire Industry, and the Department of Public Safety. Good evening. My name is Solomon Gabriel. I am the committee chairperson of the Independent Taxi Owners Committee. So tonight, by being here, we are so glad, and this is our first time to see this kind of wonderful working together and helping and discussing and showing the right ways, as you said at the beginning, for the safe way of the public that we all serve, to work together in a good ways. So what I want to assure you tonight is, we are willing and feeling in all ways to work with you, in any ways, to be cooperative with you and to go any miles that you demand to us to go. We are going to go forward with you. This is our life, the life of our children, our job. We want to be, you know, employed. We want to be, we want to teach our children. We want to send good citizens to colleges and universities. So that is our dreams, and we don't want to put our livelihood on a line. So again, thank you so much for giving us this kind of opportunity. We want to develop this kind of culture for the future, working together as a team. With some of the safety department, we had a wonderful discussion and hopefully to work with you for the future. And thank you very much again, and may God bless you all.
Thank you very much for your comments, and it gives me another opportunity to reiterate to those who are present and those who are viewing from their home or wherever they are, that we must consider that this is a livelihood for many individuals in our community, and it has to be regarded that way, at the same time balancing protection to the passengers. So thank you again. Our next speaker is Habate. I'm going to refrain from messing that up really, really bad. So Habate, and I apologize for addressing you by your first name without your permission, but if you would please state your name the proper way and any organization that you represent, and you have three minutes to speak to us on the topic of Vehicle for Hire changes.
Thank you very much. My name is Habate Okubasge. I'm currently the president of the Executive Board of Independent Taxicab Association of Columbus. In Columbus, we are known by the name ITAC. I'm also a member of the Vehicle for Hire Board, representing independent taxicab owners less than 25 cabs. The number of taxicab owners... The number of taxicabs owned by independent taxicab owners is more than 335, where 343 in between, and out of the 500 taxicabs licenses licensed in the city of Columbus. These owners, you can see on the back, they are much concerned about their self-employment and their business. That's why they showed up that much today. These owners have dream like any other American. This dream, American dream, is great here in Columbus, because Columbus, Ohio gave us the opportunity of self-employment and owning our taxicab businesses so that we can achieve the great dreams that we have. These owners operate 67% of all taxicab services in Columbus, Ohio, and its suburbs. And basically, 99% of all taxicab trips originating in Columbus International Airport are served by these independent owners. When changes to the city code were proposed on January 9, 2013, independent taxicab owners reviewed all the change, particularly the major proposed change concerning the transferability of taxicab licenses. Owner to owner, of course. I thank the Department of Public Safety that the proposal is set now for further study and research. I believe the result of the study will satisfy all concerned parties in the taxi industry. Regarding the proposal, the proposed increase of liability, the insurance liability to 300%, the taxicab owners considered this is too large a change to occur at one time. We urge the department to consider the proposed change. We also want more clarifications on the issue of authority of Vehicle for Hire Board, the Director of Public Safety, and the Board of License Appeals concerning the taxicab industry, and thank you very much.
Could you return to the podium? I do have questions. Thank you. I had a couple of questions in some of the comments that you made. You talked about a difference in the numbers we presented in the profile. Could you share with me how many members are a part of ITAC?
In ITAC, normally, people can add every time exactly the number. I may not recall it, but it's more than 215 members.
There are more than 215 members of ITAC?
Yeah.
But you're not referring to the number of independent owners in the city of Columbus? Just so I want to make sure that we're clear.
Well, I was mentioning the independent taxicab owners, including the outside of Independent Tax Association of Columbus, because I represented them in the Vehicle for Hire Board.
Okay, so your number of independent taxicab owners, could you restate that, and then the number you stated that are members of ITAC?
The taxicabs which are in the liability protection in ITAC are 315 around, and we have other independently owned taxicabs which are not protected by ITAC, which means they have other protection.
So there's approximately 315 members of ITAC that would have, taxicab, that are part of the association, that would have some vested interest in the insurance amount?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure of. And also, you raised concerns related to owner to owner, and as you are aware, that's for further discussion, and we will continue to have those discussions. And I am very keenly aware that this opportunity of owning your own business is a part of the American dream, and I'm glad and very proud of the city of Columbus for making sure that those opportunities exist. So thank you for pointing that out. I will continue the discussion related to the insurance, but I want to make sure that I'm very clear that I believe this is a step in the right direction related to the protections, not only for the drivers, but also for the passengers. And I hope that your association will consider this as a protection for them and the passengers, because this is a two-way street in terms of protection, and we certainly look at public safety in that manner, public safety for all, not just for some. Okay? I appreciate your comments, and if we have any additional questions, my office will be in touch with you, and thank you for coming down.
Well, thank you. I want to thank you for the compliments and all. And also, I want to thank the people behind me, which are leading the rules and regulations, and they thank everybody for considering the change. We are not against regulating, but we don't want to be hurt by regulations.
I appreciate it. Would the other councilmembers have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you again, and my apologies once more for your name. I believe our next speaker is Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you could please approach the podium, share your name and address and any other organization that you represent. As you're walking to the podium, I want to acknowledge that our auditor, Dorian, has joined us, and I want to thank him for being in attendance.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Nate Wilkins, Suleo Chair of Beacon Amendment Properties. First of all, let me say thank you to the taxi drivers. I've got several questions. I'm a really faithful passenger to taxi services. What I would like to see is some type of uniform for taxi services and also a business card. When I get into a taxi or picking up a taxi from a grocery store, they are very good by assisting me putting my groceries into their car, and sometimes I usually ask for a business card, and that's what they don't have some time. My other questions are to disability people as far as blind people that's getting into a taxi. I want to make sure that they are safe if they got to sit in the backseat or something, and also I'd like to see some type of handbook for a taxi, what to do by reading through the dialogues or something. But I do want to say thank you for the taxi service, because they have done a great job. But I want to piggyback on some type of uniform, some type of jacket, to let people know from hotel businesses or other entities and hospitals and other functional businesses, and I will say thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. You are certainly speaking about some of the continued discussions we hope to have that we know will require additional discussions. We have learned from other cities related to how we help promote some of those things, such as dress code, medallion systems having talked about, but those are discussions that will be continued, and we look forward to input, and I think it's valuable from passengers as well as from the industry. So thank you for coming down, and I certainly will take in advisement the comment related to our visually impaired passengers who may be riding in our taxicabs. So I really appreciate that insight and that perspective. Our next speaker this evening is Bradley Frick. And Mr. Frick, if I mispronounced your name again, apologies upfront, please approach the podium, and you have three minutes. Share your name properly and any organization that you may represent.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Mills, Chairwoman Mills. It is Bradley Frick, F-R-I-C-K, and you did well. I've been called a lot worse. Councilman Craig, good evening. Good to be back in council chambers. Chairwoman, I represent the Independent Taxicab Owners Committee, of which you have already heard from two members, that was Solomon and Habtai. Our concerns stem from the economic impact of the modernization of the code. While we approve of the modernization of the code, which by the way, dates to the 1930s in many of the code sections, let us not forget that we are modernizing on the backs of the owners and the drivers, because they're the ones that will be paying the increased fees. They're the ones that will be paying for the modernization of the industry itself. And I believe you're cognizant of that, but I think we need to be aware that it is in fact the owners that will be paying the price for this modernization. The benefits that you've included in the proposals for the owners are good ones. We would like to suggest a couple of more. We won't do it now, we don't have time, but we look forward to dialogue with you and appreciate your open mind on this. I have been associated with the taxicab industry since 1968, when I started as a driver well at Ohio State. I owned the Northway Taxicab Company for 25 years, and I've been on the Vehicle for Hire Board for 15 years, on and off. I left in 2006, left that board. So I've got some deep experience in the area. The 1988 ordinance that we have discussed was written by me and Guy Reese, who was then city attorney. What we'd like to do is make sure that we have open dialogue with you and your staff and anybody else that you deem important, obviously Director Brown's group, Amanda, who did a very nice job with this. This is the most thoughtful and considerate approach to rules, regulations, and ordinances that I've seen in 40 years. It's obvious that you've been doing your homework. It's obvious that they have been thoughtful in their approach, and we look forward to cooperating and with working with you to finalize the ultimate language of the code. Insurance is certainly a concern. The safety is always number one. We are open to virtually any suggestion, but once again, I just want to remind you that ultimately, it's the independent owners, as well as Yellow Cab and the large owners, that will ultimately pay for the modernization of the industry. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Frick. I do, I want to make sure that I understood you correctly in highlighting that we have attempted balance in terms of, there are some things that are give and take, that will benefit the drivers, that are also some modernizing that will come with some costs. I am going to ask Amanda Ford to talk a little bit about the credit card fees and what we have suggested to accommodate some of that, some of those changes, but certainly, we know that as we attract more tourism, as you heard from me earlier, that that will increase traffic and increase passengers, which again increases revenue, not only for the taxicab drivers, but also for the city as a whole. And so we know that in order to have folks make more than one visit to the city of Columbus benefits us all, and so that first-time impression or those impressions are lasting, and we know that that can have an economic impact on that industry as well as the city. Amanda, would you elaborate a little bit on the credit card fees and how that will be addressed?
You know, obviously, all customers have that option, whether they want to pay by cash or credit card. We just want to make sure that they have that ability to pay by credit card if they choose to do so. You know, currently, they're only allowed to charge a 50 cent fee, but we realize that they could be paying potentially up to $3 to $4, the owner or the driver is paying $3 to $4 per transaction. So that's why we agreed to increase that fee to at least $1.50, and it's something that's up for negotiation as we move forward, of potentially increasing that fee even more if we feel it's appropriate as we make the credit card machines mandatory. We realize that's an added expense for them, you know, to allow for those credit cards, but we also realize that most customers want to pay by credit card, just out of convenience for them. So we're trying to balance that out a little bit by offering that increase to them.
And Mr. Frick, as you mentioned, we will continue the discussions because we want to be thoughtful, and we know that this is quite an undertaking, and we know that we want to engage the folks who this is impacting. So thank you again for coming down.
Very good, and thank you.
Did you have any questions?
Well, I just wanted to certainly take this time to acknowledge the long-term commitment of Mr. Frick and his work with the taxi service and his realization that it is an extremely important part of our city, our mode of transportation. Your personal commitment, you know, has been, has been significant, and we need to say that, and we appreciate your continued work. I am interested, you talked about the fees, and again, I, we will continue to work with the chairman regarding this whole fee structure. I think Amanda has done a terrific job in her explanation tonight, her thorough, her thoughtfulness tonight in presenting this. But I would be interested in your thoughts about incremental increases with regard to how we get to where we need to get, you know, as we continue to move forward.
Very good, thank you. I think incremental is an important word as it relates to not only fee, but also to the insurance and the step-up of the insurance coverage. So there's some details that we hope to work with you on in order to get to the ultimate goal in increments.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig.
Thank you for the kind words, Councilman.
Next, we have Mr. Michael Goldsberry. If you would please approach the podium, please state your name and any organization you represent, and please provide us only three minutes of your comments and questions related to Vehicle for Hire. Thank you.
I'll be real short. Thank you, honorable members of city council, for allowing us to speak on behalf of these code changes here this evening. We especially wish to thank Safety Director Mitchell Brown, Amanda Ford, Ramona Potts, and Annie Marsico from the Safety Director's Office. We would also like to thank Wesley Phillips from the City Attorney's Office, as well as Sharon Gad and Glenn Rutter from the City License Section. I'm Michael Goldsberry from Acme Enterprises Incorporated, 115 East Fifth Avenue, doing business at Acme Taxi. We're the second-largest company in the city. We've been operating for 28 years. Director Brown and the Safety Director's Office held a meeting at 1111 East Broad that allowed us from the industry to convey our concerns over the proposed code changes. We found this meeting to be extremely fruitful, and the Safety Director's Office made changes in the proposed changes to city council this evening that all of us in the industry, as far as where we stand, can live with. We feel these changes reflect taxi code changes that are not only reasonable, but at the same time are very beneficial to the riding public, members of the industry, and also the offices of the city. We look forward to any future opportunity to contribute to conversations concerning changes in the taxicab code, especially in regards to the upcoming discussions that we're going to be having on owner and owner licenses. We'd like to be a part of any committee that we would be allowed to in regards to those discussions. Once again, we thank the city for the opportunity to speak in regard to the changes proposed at the council meeting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Appreciate you coming down. I do want to make one note that Annie Marsico belongs to Councilmember Mills' office, so no stealing, Public Safety Director Mitchell Brown. Just so that, I wanted to make sure that my office had engagement, and so Annie Marsico has been representing my office through this process. So I just want to make sure there's no poaching going on from the Safety Department. Our next speaker is Charlie, oh, Charlie.
Close.
Close.
Very good.
Will you please restate your name properly and share your comments that are no longer than three minutes related to Vehicle for Hire this evening?
It's Charlie Evraniyan. You're close. Just throw the E in front of it. Councilwoman Mills, Councilmember Craig, my name is Charlie Evraniyan, and I serve as Community Relations Manager for Yellow Cab of Columbus. For a number of positive reasons illustrated in the presentation by the Department of Public Safety today, these recommendations are long overdue and strongly supported by Yellow Cab of Columbus and its fleet of 124 vehicles. We believe that potential hardships that may have been echoed here today are minor in comparison to the public good these initiatives will serve. We also believe that these initiatives have the capacity to provide positive benefits and protection to each individual Columbus taxicab driver. We encourage the Department of Public Safety to continue with its regulatory reforms and offer our continued assistance to strengthen the infrastructure of the Columbus taxicab industry. Councilwoman Mills, Councilmember Craig, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Craig, any questions or comments? Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you coming down this evening.
Certainly, thank you.
Our next, and I believe final, speaker is Dan Birch. I believe that's an H on the end. I'm not quite making out whether that's a CH. If you would please approach the podium, I would greatly appreciate it, and please, as you walk, I hope that you are accepting my apologies. as you walk, I hope that you are accepting my apologies for your name. If you would please properly state your name-
Sure, it's quite all right.
-and any organization that you rep, I have to finish mine before they turn on your microphone. If you would please share your comments or questions within the three minutes, and thank you for coming to council.
Absolutely. Actually, that's a U, so my last name is Baru, but my handwriting mistake, I apologize for that. I want to thank everyone from the city, from city council and all others within the city, and taxi owners and citizens all alike for giving me this opportunity to speak. Again, I don't represent one particular group. I've got a lot of family members that own taxi cabs, I've got friends that own taxi cabs that are drivers. So as a concerned citizen, I just wanted to make a couple comments. Again, looking through these numbers and the agenda that you prepared, I want to point out one particular item here under wheelchair and specialty license, and how the 30 licenses and how that number was reached in the interest of transparency and making sure everyone knows how that number was determined. And I'm not sure of the 500 total licenses, how many belong to independent taxi cabs, how many belong to larger companies or those that aren't termed as independent, but I'm just curious how that number was reached, if that 30 licenses, the breakdown, you've got 15 for two cab companies and an additional 15, 10 for independent owners, and five open for others, which I'm assuming are perhaps drivers and non-owners or however it's described. So questions are, how are these numbers reached at? Is this a final number, meaning when it's presented to council, then will it then become a final code or be written in stone? So really, that's all I have, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and have a good night.
Okay, I want to make sure that we answer your questions. Thank you again for coming to council, and I want to again go back to the issue of the limits and how we approach all of that related to license. Mr. Baru, if I have other questions, I need you to come back just to make sure I answer your questions. I just want to make sure that I heard it correctly. Your question is about the number for licenses total, and then how we arrive at the number for the specialty license. That's a two-part question. Am I correct? Did I understand your question correctly?
That is true.
Okay, so the 500 is the limit that we've had on taxi licenses, and then we'll address the specialty license question. And I'm going to allow Amanda Ford to provide some clarity in terms of the breakdown so that she gives you the detail behind those numbers, but I can assure you that that number, the 500 number, is set for a reason based on supply and demand. Amanda Ford?
May I say one more before? I apologize. The 500, I'm not concerned about the 500. I think I understood perfectly that's set basically on population and not diluting the number of taxis operational. I'm more concerned about the additional 30 and how that percentage was broken down, and of the 500, how many are independent, how many are large company, and how this 15, 15 was broken up.
Right, I thought you had a question on the 500. So you do have a question on the 500?
I do not have a-
On the breakdown.
I do not have-
The breakdown, if you look at the vehicle for hire cost profile, it gives you the breakdown of those 500, and then again, I'll ask Amanda Ford to address the specialty license. I understood your question this time?
Yes.
All right, here we go.
Chairman Mills, if I may, could I have Ramona Potts respond to that question more appropriately?
Absolutely, Director.
Councilmember Mills and Councilmember Craig, when we decided to discuss the wheelchair specialty licenses, we created a wheelchair subcommittee out of the Vehicle for Hire Board, and that committee consisted of five members, two from the industry, one from city council, and two from the city of Columbus. We had a lot of discussions about how we, originally we only asked for 25, and after discussions with the subcommittee, we decided that it would be fair to ask for 30. Now, I am new to this process and have been involved for about five years, and the history behind the way regular licenses for taxi cabs are issued is that the large owners get a percentage, and then it's opened up to independent owners. And we had a lot of discussion within the members, taxi cab members in the city, about how we would dole out these 30. We felt 30 was a fair number to be able to dole them out evenly amongst large owners, small owners, independents, and possibly offer them to non-owners for opportunity to own. We put, what we did is we came up with a decision from the subcommittee, and the subcommittee agreed to do with the 15, this thing, it's 10 and 5, 10 for yellow, 5 for Acme, 10 for the independent owners, and 5 for the non-owners to allow for non-owners to be able to have the opportunity to own. That was voted on, and it was presented to the Vehicle for Hire Board, and it was approved by the Vehicle for Hire Board. So the industry was involved in the decision-making. There was a lot of discussion, I think Amanda was there for some of the subcommittee meetings, and we basically, it was a decision made by the subcommittee and the industry was involved.
Thank you very much. And so, Mr. Baru, I want to reiterate to your comment about etched in stone. In terms of going forward, there is still continued discussion, and council will address all of these proposed recommendations that you see here, and then we'll come back with a final piece. If you have additional comments or suggestions related to any of this, you certainly can contact my office. Okay? Thank you. I want to thank again to everyone who participated either by viewing tonight's hearing, by being present, by offering testimony. It all matters, and it all makes a difference, and we want to continue to have engagement from the citizens in Columbus and particularly those who have vested interests in these proposed changes. I want to make sure that you all know that you can continue to have discussions with my office after tonight's hearing. We certainly look forward to passing the legislation with some of the input that we've heard tonight. The final legislation will be distributed through the Vehicle for Hire Board, just so everyone is aware, and made available online prior to passage. So if there are additional comments, and I'll repeat that, the final legislation will be distributed through the Vehicle for Hire Board and also made available online prior to passage. We have certainly prided ourselves on engagement of the industry in these changes, and we want to continue that all the way through to passage. Again, following the passage of this legislation, the mayor, the Department of Public Safety, and my office will continue to look into ensuring that our passengers are protected. As I started in the opening of this hearing, it's extremely important that we take a look at public safety for all. We also want to make sure that through increased insurance efforts that we address the concerns that are related to owner to owner transfers, and we realize that is a hefty discussion, and we want to make sure that it's a full and thoughtful discussion related to owner to owner licenses. And again, as I mentioned earlier, continuing the engagement with the individuals in the industry, not only from the companies, the independent taxi drivers in all. And I am very, very pleased that we have had participation from both independents as well as our large companies and those who are passengers, those who have vested interests as we just heard from our last speaker offering public testimony, it all matters. And so the diversity of the thought brought to the process only makes the process better. And so I really appreciate the variety of perspectives that have been offered throughout this process. If you have any additional further questions or comments, please feel free to contact my office, and I want to make sure that before we close tonight, that if you don't take away anything else from tonight's hearing, that you understand there has been such hard work put into this process, carefulness and consideration. And I want to especially thank Amanda Ford, Ramona Potts, and my office, Team Mills, because it has been a long process, and I want to assure you that I have been briefed along the way in trying to keep up with all of the discussions and making sure that all voices have been heard. Their hard work and their passion to support the drivers, the industry, and the citizens as a whole is extremely important and to be commended. The mission and the importance of our citizens' safety is certainly regarded by these individuals, and their hard work speaks through what you see here tonight. They've had great understanding and openness to all of the folks in the industry, and for that, I want to say special thank you to those folks. And Director Brown, you should be extremely proud, the hard work that these individuals have put forth in this, and I want to thank you for loaning them to the process, and again thanking Team Mills who's behind me, Annie Marsico who has certainly been a part of it, and she has woke up thinking vehicle for hire board. I think she says vehicle for hire when we're talking about something like lunch because she's just sleeping and breathing vehicle for hire. So I want to thank everyone, and again, the discussion will continue and the engagement will continue. And so I thank you all for coming this evening, and please have a safe travel home, and I appreciate your engagement in the work and important decisions on behalf of the citizens of Columbus. Thank you and good night.[1786.45][1786.45](APPLAUSE).